Good evening, I'd like to call to order the Town of Hebron Board of Selectmen regular meeting of August 7th, 2025 to order at 7:00 PM. If we could all rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, any additions or changes to the agenda?
I don't believe so, but I'm gonna ad lib just underneath the page.
Sounds good.
But I think it still falls on the item.
Yes. Any, we're good?
Yeah.
That brings us to item four, public comment. This section of the agenda is reserved for persons in attendance who wish to briefly address the Board of Selectmen. The Board requests that a person's comments be limited to a single period lasting three minutes or less. While the Board respects the right of the public to provide comment, this time is not intended for open discussion or a Board response. Residents who wish to request a dialogue should make arrangements to do so through the Town Manager's office or the Board Chair. Persons wishing to comment online should type "comment" and your name in the chat box and you will be recognized. Okay. Any public comments? Alright, good to go. That brings us to item five, special recognition.
Sir Chairman, I don't have anything at this time for that item.
Alright. Number six, appointments and resignations. Did you want to, you want us to do the appointment first, or do you wanna go?
Yeah, I would think I would discuss it if you guys were to move forward with the appointment.
Okay. Then, uh...
Make a motion. That in accordance with the Town Charter, Section 803, the Hebron Board of Selectmen confirms the Town Manager's appointment of Bridgette and Ganelli, that's somewhere close, as acting revenue collector effective August 7th, 2025.
Okay. Discussion?
Uh, I'd just like to say, being in and out of the Town Hall quite often, um, I've actually visited with Bridgette a few times and, you know, whether it's doing electoral work or whatever, and, uh, very knowledgeable, very capable, uh, has definitely been assisting the assessor in a lot of her duties and drifting back and forth. Uh, I think this is a fantastic appointment.
Alright. Excellent. All those in favor signify by saying aye, opposed nay, or abstentions. Uh, Dan Larson?
Uh, Dan Larson, aye.
Sean Fitzgerald?
Sean Fitzgerald, aye.
Tiffany Teal?
Tiffany Teal, aye.
Claudia Riley?
Aye.
And Keith Pettit, aye. Unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you. And Bridgette is here tonight. You guys wanted to hear from her at all?
If you'd like to, please.
I'm sorry, what was?
Would you like to say a few words now that you've been appointed acting revenue collector?
Thank you. I am honored to be given the opportunity to step up into that position. And I just look forward to working with the community more. Um, I've only been here since October, so there's still more for me to learn. Um, and, but thus far, it's been really good interaction that I've had with everyone, so I'm really looking forward stepping up. Thank you.
Welcome.
So with that being said, thank you, Bridgette. Um, we're very fortunate to have employees to step up in a time of need, and we're also very fortunate to have retired employees come back and assist as much as they could to get us through the tax collection month, which we, we did. So that was a hurtless task, and thank you again. And with that being said, and now with the actions of the Board of Selectmen, which I appreciate, the appointment as acting, I would like permission to advertise for, I think the next step would be to advertise for the revenue collector's position. I would like the approval of the Board tonight to advertise for that job, knowing that I would be sending out a draft job description. We can do that tomorrow, right?
Mm-hmm.
Um, to both the Board of Selectmen, and it's a union position, we'd have to send it to the union. You guys can mark it up. And when we get it back from the union, we'll send you what they sent us, and we can have that on the next agenda. But I think we can sell our position now to try to give them some help in the office, because Bridgette's position will be empty, now that she's the acting revenue collector. So there's a little bit of a gap we're trying to fill. I think that's my suggestion. So it's up to the Board to vote whether you wanna do that or not.
Yeah, I mean, um, I, I, I don't think there's any issue with it. Um, I think that the union making their suggestions and us making our suggestions at the same time, rather than one having to wait for the other going back and forth, back and forth, we can get our collective changes together and then, um, discuss it as a whole document the next meeting.
Thank you.
Yeah, something I'd like to also add. Although we don't have a lot of this type of cross-training within the town, just because of, of not having the number of employees, this is a perfect example of why cross-training is so important, so that when an event like this does happen, we are literally not out of the water. You know, we have people, you know, qualified people that are able to step in and, and take over for situations like this. And I just hope that we can, can do this, you know, potentially for all the departments, because we are very, very thin. You know, and, and part of it's our own faults in trying to keep budgets low for the town. Um, it seems like whenever there had to have been a hit taken, it was always on the town's side. And, uh, you know, we just, this guy, we kind of said that, uh, we've, we've gotta try to figure out some ways of remedying some of these types of issues.
Yeah, I, I couldn't agree more. I mean, cross-training is very important. You know, we had Lori in here last meeting, and, um, this is a, a common theme across government employment, is cross-training and documentation of procedures. And, you know, I encourage you, even though you're acting, to feel free to document as much as you can while you're learning and, and as you're, you're going along, because sometimes unfortunately, just because of, of the nature of the applicant pool and the jobs being out there, sometimes you have to fill with temp staff. And when they come in, having, you know, documented procedures that they can follow, um, is really helpful. So, yes, cross-training and documentation, both vitally important, especially for small organizations like ours. So. Excellent. That will bring us to item seven, Town Manager's report.
Hey, I'm on there, so I'll go slow and bear with me if somebody wants to talk about any one of the items I bring up. First off, should be pretty cut and dry, still in the union negotiations with the Public Works Department and the, um, Operators Union, so that's ongoing. So when's the next meeting? Next week?
Yeah, eleven.
Eleven. So we're working in between those meetings with the town's attorney to, uh, put the documents together. So we're, we're getting pretty close to economics. So I think everything else went pretty well as so far, but that's all I can say until we have a tentative agreement. Um, as I stated earlier, tomorrow we'll be in FYI in Hartford with Keith, so if it works. 9:30 with the Friends of the Library, Mr. Howard. He also has another things, the activities in the Town Manager's office, he also has another I explained it before, another FYI request, which is quite broad, so that's taken a lot of time to try to, you know, comply with that. We're doing what we need to do on a daily basis, but we still have to show that we're giving some time to the requests as well, so. Okay. Of course, we're working on the staffing issues between, uh, the Finance and the Assessor's Office, and we'll continue to update you on what we're gonna do with that, Revenue Collector's Office. And for the, uh, Finance Office, the temp to help us finish up and get the information we need for the audit starts Monday. I think she's gonna pop in tomorrow and sure face and meet the team, which is good. And, uh, the Town Planner and myself had a meeting today with, uh, Resilient Land and Water and Connecticut Water Company regarding next steps. We have money in the budget, do some test wells, some, uh, engineering, and we look to Connecticut Water to see how they can help us in partnering on design and information for some grants. Also gonna be meeting with Kathy Osten and Steve Weir to try to see what monies are out there to try to help us in our pursuit of water. I mean, that's one of the biggest things we need for economic development, so one of the, one of the goals that have been set. So we're working on that. I don't think we heard anything new today. But one thing I did to satisfy the Board of Selectmen and the people in town is it's the worst-case scenario if we have to go to MDC. Watering from Glastonbury, I mean, I don't think that's affordable for us. But if there's, at the end of the day, if there's no other options, at least we'll have a number of what that looks like. We're not an MDC town, so we would pay more even just that case, and I'm pretty sure I've been told, we've been told the water in Glastonbury is in the center, so it's not like it's...
Yeah. So just a connection, whatever, I'm pretty sure.
Yeah, so they're gonna give us a price on that, so at least we have it from the developer's side, what's the town doing as well? We got this, but we're looking for this, and Connecticut Water, uh, is regulated by two, um, government agencies, and they will not let them spend money on economic development. They can't take their user monies to, to, you know, for and help us in design and grant writing and things like that, but, uh, engineering, that's about the extent of that. Okay.
Andy, can you elaborate a little bit more about the well conversation? Are you looking for wells in specific areas, or basically, like, is here's a water kind of thing?
But we have a consultant that does this type of work, and they've looked at our, our, uh, our mapping, and they've located some town-owned properties that have some potential through the, the layers that we have in the GS system. So it would be exploratory, but it, I don't, it's more than just going out with a dowser and hoping to find water. There's some logic behind it, but we've gotta start trying to do something instead of just punching holes in the ground.
Right, right. Okay.
So, a good question.
Is there a quantity of water that we're trying to ascertain to find?
Well, another great question. I think at this point, unfortunately, anything would help. Right now, we have at least, I forgot how many gallons a day, which isn't a lot, and we have to keep a 15% yield. So the wells that we tapped back into at the Senior Center are just helping us to stay in that yield, that are not really more consumption or additional, uh, use for new business or development, so uh, we don't have a, I, I think at this point, we find any water would be a, a help for us.
I know there are areas in town where quite literally there are homes that actually have two wells, just to try and meet minimum daily requirements, just so that they can live in the structures.
Yeah. Uh, just, once again, just so MDC is not the, the elephant in the room. I learned this today along with Matt. They said they spent, was it seven or nine million dollars in the last?
It was nine over the last?
I think it was right.
Eleven years, something like that?
Yeah, something like seven years. The problem that we have, and it's a state problem, maybe bigger than the state, but at PFAS, that's out, that had been detected in the three, the new wells they built up by the apartments. And now they have to treat that, and that's another expense. Luckily, that hasn't shown up at the Anson Lake Well System, but um, other towns are having that problem as well. That was something that I didn't know about till today. So we'll continue to have some hurdles, so just trying to keep you abreast as when we find this stuff out. It's a major component for Hebron.
Thank you.
Um, on a good note, I always try to come back with a good one after a tough one. The Bond Council, I haven't got the press release yet, but the Bond Council approved the Town of Hebron for $500,000 towards a new purchase of a fire truck. We've been waiting for that for a while, so that's, that's really good news. And we'll get working on some designs and lots for that. Uh, we've been very busy with RFPs for Ram generators, Ram concrete pads, rejecting bids. Now there's new bids being drawn up, we set out and opened again, so hopefully um, we get some, uh, bidders that are qualified and bid appropriately. Um, and then, as I said, I would talk about is uh, the EDC, the housing choices, uh, regarding their tax abatements and affordable housing options for the town is looking to set up a workshop soon with the Board of Selectmen. So I would tell them I'd bring it up tonight, maybe we could have it on the agenda to discuss what that would look like for next, uh, next meeting.
Sure.
Eddie? Did I miss anything? I think, I think that was enough.
Mm-hmm.
I wanna pay up.
Eighty?
Okay. That brings us to 8A, ARPA. There's no update or questions? And 8B, um, Public Works Action Committee update. Um, they have not had another meeting since our last one, so I don't think there's any new information there, other than uh, when they're here Tuesday, they're doing more testing or something? They are doing more testing, yes. And, uh, also, um, Mao had sent an email. Did, did everyone get it, or did, alright, then I will forward it along to you. Um, he has requested and has received permission to have a display booth at the Hebron Harvest Fair. However, uh, it is in desperate need of people to man it. So if anyone has any spare time, um, you're, yeah, not you. Uh, yeah. Uh, I, again, I will forward the email to you so that we can, you guys can respond to Mao with your schedules or availability as necessary.
Keith, what did you say to the, the fair name, please?
It's the first weekend in September.
Fourth through the seventh.
Hold on.
Right.
I got a calendar.
Okay.
I think I got a calendar. It's always a fourth, fifth, sixth, and seventh?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, weekend after Labor Day. Alright, uh, that brings us to 8C, Personnel Policy Review.
Uh, yeah, um, we were hoping to have that back today, we'll probably show up tomorrow, but we'll put that on the next, um, Black Lives Matter, I'm sure we'll have it by then. It's a red line version for the, uh, Labor Attorney.
Okay.
For the Board to review and, and make comments and add or delete or suggestions. That, that should be done, right? Right, Dory?
Yeah. Attorney Maloney said that each end of the week.
Pretty good, too, right? Not bad.
Okay. You know, and we, seeing you have your calendar, could we look to see what date would be for a workshop so we could try to put that in when we talk? Under on this people?
The 21st is our next one, and then it's the 11th and the 25th of September.
Would you wanna do an add a select this meeting?
Or this is the housing choices, or the?
Yeah.
I mean...
It's up to you guys. I, I'm not suggesting that, I just went and threw those dates out, I wasn't sure.
Efficient, right?
Yeah, 'cause, uh, I know we're not gonna be able to accommodate their schedule, because their meetings happen at noon on Fridays.
Oh.
So, uh,
Yeah.
that's kinda difficult.
I think they would accommodate our schedule. I know they're gonna, yeah, this was from more, if we give them dates and times so we could...
Yeah, so I'm, I'm fine with either the 21st or the 11th, if they wanna...
Oh, you're gonna have a town meeting on the 21st?
Yes.
Wow. So it's already an extended meeting, isn't it?
No.
No, it's a public hearing before our normal meeting. Yeah, I mean...
I prefer the September 11th.
Yeah, Matt's not available, you'll be able for 11.
Okay, that works for me.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Um, that brings us to 8D, uh, Ordinance Delegating the Board of Selectmen as the authority for fixed assessment in accordance with Connecticut general statutes and other local economic development incentive programs.
Did you want us to speak to that? I mean, we sent the information. Matt, do you wanna chime in on that?
I mean, if there's...
If there's something to be added.
First, or open up discussion for proceeding? I'll do the motion. Do you have it available for Sean?
Yes.
Well, thank you. Alright, I move that the Hebron Board of Selectmen approve the revisions to the legal notice regarding the public hearing that has been scheduled for Thursday, August 21st, 2025, at 6:45 PM at the Hebron Town Office Building Lower Level Meeting Room, to receive public comment concerning an ordinance delegating the Board of Selectmen as the authority for fixed assessment in accordance with Connecticut general statutes and other local economic development incentive programs. Okay?
Sure, so, um, as the Board's probably, you know, aware, we discussed this last meeting. At the time, um, we presented a draft ordinance, uh, the chart was reviewed with the Town Attorney and, uh, myself and, uh, Don Lanza put our heads together and gave it a little more thought. Um, the intent here, again, is that, uh, we memorialize, um, the role of the Board of Selectmen uh, in their capacity to, um, reach agreements on tax abatements under the, uh, Hebron Economic Development Incentive Program. So this draft ordinance with some minor modifications, uh, leaves open the flexibility we were hoping to encompass in it, and, um, I, I think that uh, it's sufficient to move forward. Town Attorney is good with it. And, uh, we think it, we think it works.
You approved the, uh, red line version that's on our agenda, the legal most heated, okay, great. Works for me.
Yeah, I mean, that means less is good.
Less is...
Okay. Alright, if there's no other conversation, then we will proceed to, all those in favor signify by saying aye, opposed nay, or abstentions. Uh, Dan Larson?
Dan Larson, aye.
Sean Fitzgerald?
Sean Fitzgerald, aye.
Tiffany Teal?
Tiffany Teal, aye.
Claudia Riley?
Claudia Riley, aye.
Keith Pettit, aye. Unanimous, thank you all. And we already scheduled the public hearing last meeting, right? So we're good on that.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Perfect. That brings us to AE, any other old business? I don't believe so. And 9A, uh, award the 2026 revaluation bid. Tiffany, if you would be so kind?
Sure. Moves that the Hebron Board of Selectmen awards a bid for the 2026 Grand List Reappraisal and Revaluation to E-Qualty Valuation Services LLC of Waterbury, Connecticut, in the amount of $93,000 is recommended and authorized Andrew J. Tierney, Town Manager, to sign necessary contract documents.
Okay. Discussion, questions?
Mary, I just, and, and I, I, I'm, you know, in favor of the motion and all that, but I was just curious, the, the dollar difference between the two bidders was pretty huge.
Well, I think, I think because one of them having experience with our town specifically, and also you know, experience with the software, they kind of knew going into it what they were getting into, where the other company is like we're not hedging for problems.
Okay, no, as I say, I just, you know, I'm just looking at the dollars and saying, wow.
Yeah, it's a big difference. Well, we do use this company's...
We've used them in the past.
It's their software is what we use.
Yes.
And we are not changing the software for the bid. So, yeah, they're just, they have to basically learn how to use the other company's software, and companies hate it.
Well, it works for them.
It just, yeah.
Just, so...
Significant.
A significant difference.
Yeah. Yep. Alright, so...
I just had a question, just for excuse my ignorance, but no, I'm why is something like this, $93,000?
So I can ask Suzanne to talk to that, but that's pretty much the going rate. There's only roughly two auditing firms now that do municipalities, not a lot of money in it. One's more expensive, but that's more her bailiwick. So Suzanne, would you like to, to answer that question of the actual bidder and why that costs that much to do a rebound with, with, what is that details?
Yeah, actually, I think the price came in, uh, very reasonable.
Yeah.
And, uh, you know, we had quite a bit more budget. Um, if we find that we have additional, um, uh, appraisals need to be done for some of our more complex properties, we may have to uh, spend a little more, but not nearly what the 156 or the second bidder, um, there's quite a bit of, uh, detailed work that's done. I mean, you're reviewing, we're doing mass appraisal, so we're reviewing all the parcels in town, residential, um, uh, industrial, commercial. So it's a wide-scope work that's done. And they have, um, a lot of tools in their arsenal that, um, they utilize, but it's, it's labor hours.
So it's really a manual thing versus automated?
There is, uh, it's, it's a hybrid, so there's both. There, uh, you know, there, uh, you have budgeted for 170 inspections minimum and, um, um, over 200 permits, um, that need to be reviewed, so that's a lot of boots on the ground, plus, uh, photographs, to update photographs as needed. It's, it's labor hours.
And what would you say could be or is the role of AI playing in all of this?
So right now, it's, it's really something that's developing and emerging in, uh, uh, appraisal. And with revaluation, I'm sure a place into it, but, um, it, it can create more efficiencies, but it's really still an emerging tool that's being used to rebalance, and we'd have to look five years down the road to see where it's coming at.
Here yet.
Now, as a matter of fact, it's something that when, when I go to conferences and, and, uh, symposiums, it's something that we're starting to have discuss more and more, AI and BI and its uses in appraisal and valuation, but it is still an emerging, um, uh, tool that is being utilized, so.
And would you guess that once AI is incorporated, I mean, it obviously can be a progress tool, you think that it would bring down the cost of any of those evaluations like this?
Well, I think we're seeing some of it right here, because they, because we have more aerial imagery, because there's more work that can be, um, uh, more information that can be extrapolated more quickly.
Right.
And $93,000 is, is quite a bit lower than I thought it would be, so I think it's just reflective of the increased efficiencies that are coming from, um, from computers, you know, not just AI, but also from, uh, aerial imagery and, um, the systems that we have.
Okay, I appreciate it.
No problem. It's still a, a lot of work, and, um, yeah. But we are mandated by the state to do it every five years, and um, 2026 is our year. The earlier that we can kind of move forward to get the company moving forward, the more data that we can get, hopefully earlier, to put us ahead, because we are not the only town that is gonna be doing revaluation, and there are a limited number of companies that do it, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright. All those in favor signify by saying aye, opposed nay, or abstentions. Dan Larson?
Uh, Dan Larson, aye.
Sean Fitzgerald?
Sean Fitzgerald, aye.
Tiffany Teal?
Tiffany Teal, aye.
Claudia Riley?
Claudia Riley, aye.
And Keith Pettit, aye, unanimous, thank you very much. That brings us to item 9B, uh, Economic Development Incentive Program applications for Proudlight LLC and Strong Wolf LLC.
Yeah, if you guys don't mind, please.
Oh, please.
Matt Porto, I'm the Town Planner, and with me, Shell Nicholson, she's the chairperson of the Economic Development Commission. Uh, tonight, we're excited to share, uh, on behalf of the Economic Development Commission, two recommendations for new businesses interested in, um, in investing in Hebron. Um, they are working together in a sense, uh, in that they are going to hopefully, um, be setting up and, and, and constructing their future businesses, uh, adjacent properties. Um, this would be on the west side of Church Street, opposite essentially, um, George's Pizza.
Yep.
You know, gentlemen's familiar with. This has historically been, um, agricultural property, but has been set for sale for many, many years. Um, not long ago, the Planning and Zoning Commission approved a five-lot subdivision. Um, this is a split-zone property, meaning that the interior portion with frontage on Church Street has three commercial lots, and the exterior perimeter to provide a buffer to the residential neighborhood, uh, is residence one zoning. Um, the properties do have good frontage and access to our sanitary sewer system on Church Street, but have some limitations in that there are extensive weapons to the rear of the property. Um, they've been through, uh, permitting process to understand, you know, that the Hebron Economic Development Program has a note in it that says, um, we encourage applicants for tax abatement to we encourage applicants for tax abatement to do so prior to getting permits, local land use permits. However, I think you'll find or I have heard in helping those folks get through the process that it's hard to understand what the investment is. You get through the process of permitting because things come up, you know, there's engineering that's required to be not just local, but sixth standard for, for new development. So tonight we have with us Sean and Bria Comer. I'll introduce them in a moment. They are looking at investing in parcels for properties 290 Church Street and 300 Church Street. You will be somewhat familiar with those addresses because just at 280 Church Street, you know, perhaps a month ago, this commission, this board approved tax abatement for the Connecticut Equine Connecticut 280 Church Street. That is the northernly parcel of the three. So here we have the potential for three properties to kind of work together as one. The first of the two proposals is Hebron Mini Golf. This is being proposed by an LLC called Proudlight LLC, but essentially it is Bria Comer. You have in your packet memo that I drafted outlining what the request is or the recommendation from the EDC is. A letter describing the proposal from the applicant and a site plan that shows the shared access parking area, plot plan of the layout of the site, but also a layout of the mini golf course. So kind of exciting. So I think, you know, speaking on behalf of the Economic Development Commission, this is, you know, this is a use that fits the bill in terms of the program's goals. Providing goods and services and entertainment value for, you know, a community that only has so many choices. This runs the gamut from, in terms of user ship. I know it is the intent of the app to provide at least nine poles that are going to be fully accessible. And, you know, it probably wind up being pretty nice to have dibs on the landscaping professional adjacent to you to, you know, facilitate, you know, maintenance and upkeep. So I'll let Michelle take it there in terms of the recommendation of EDC.
So we're, I think the EDC, I know I certainly am really excited about this particular application. I think that it, it's a tricky property, right? With that wetland strip behind it and this, this combination of use is I just think it's so smart and it's such a good use of the property because they're, you know, they're going to be working together and adding so much value to something that we need in town, two things that we need in town. Having this entertainment piece, but really having it not be it's not an arcade. It's, it's like fun. It's nice. It melds with the landscape. The landscaping piece of this, the landscaping business piece of this is like one of the only good uses I can think of that property because they can put trees back there or, you know, whatever it is that they have growing. And it's not going to be a problem. It's not, it's not going to interfere with wetlands. Whereas I think if you had anybody who's trying to do traffic back there or anything like that, you, you really, we're going to have issues. So it's such a smart use of the property. This again checks all the boxes for the EDC as far as the, you know, the vision that we've worked and that we've all agreed on. In that, you know, this is an owner occupied property. This is, you know, these, these folks live in town. They're, they're, they're here for the long run. They're, they've got kids going into the system. You know, they're, they're local. They own a house in town. Like they, they want to see this succeed. They're going to be there every day. They're well, maybe not every day, but probably every day. But they're, they're going to be watching it, you know, they're part of it. It's not, this isn't, if this isn't some investor coming in and buying up some property and then just walking back away from it. This is exactly what we want. These are people that are vested in our town. But this is, there, there's two different, there's two different parcels, two different recommendations, right? So you have them both in your packet and they're done differently. The first one that Matt brought up first is, is the mini golf and you can see that we put through the recommendation for that a little bit more front loaded. There's a couple of reasons for that. The upfront cost of course is much higher for a mini golf course because of construction and also mini golf courses are a little bit of a challenging environment right now as far as funding goes. I know Bria has been working a lot with the, you know, different lenders, spending a lot of time with the Chamber of Commerce, trying to work with people that we have connections to, to try to get her funding that she needs. So I think if the town can help her out a little bit by front loading some of those taxes with the five year abatement, that would be really helpful. So we did put forth a request for that with the five year term with 100% front loaded for the first two years and then dropping to 80, 60 and 40. As far as the, as far as the landscaping business, a little bit more spread out seemed to work out fine. So again, a five year request with the 180, 60, 40, 20. So just that, just that gradual reduction as it goes in. Like Matt said, this is property that's been sitting empty for a long time. It's not producing any tax revenue. It's a win-win for everybody in my opinion.
Okay, so I, I, you know, what I did in terms of the breakdown of what the potential real property tax revenue would look like and what the relief package could ultimately look like. We had to make some assumptions. So face, we, we made our projections in terms of the properties value and what ultimately would, would be the tax revenue was based on the investment that they have indicated that is going to be required to complete the project. So, you know, again, this is, this is going to be probably a bit of a moving target. I know, you know, we've had a conversation with the assessor and there's not a lot of comps to really kind of point to. Standalone situation like this. So and then I was just going to say, I don't want to put them in the spot here. Like ask them any questions or if they feel inclined to share a little bit more about their vision, but you know, working with the Economic Development Commission and Sean and Bria through the process, through the permitting process, but then through this kind of negotiation process before a recommendation is made. It, you know, it, it's kind of an inspiring story. And I think you have some, it's limited, right? Our, our business districts outside of the town center are limited. But I think what you have here is, is a nice noted activity, that kind of building. So I feel like there are additional opportunities. You know, personally from a planning perspective, particularly the traffic planning perspective, really look forward to opportunities to slow traffic to make it safe in that area because you have, you know, you can easily see, you know, the mini golf, you know, I just think about like, what, what is a, a young couple going to do, you know, on a date? Wouldn't that be nice? Like go play mini golf and go get some ice cream or, you know, get a pizza or something like that. So it, it's nice to have some options there in Hebron. You don't have to drive over to that. So.
It's also just like a really brilliant business. You know, the, the, you know, Sean's talking to somebody about building a waterfall at their house. He can say, well, you can go look at it over on hole eight if you want, right? I mean, it's a living, it's a living showroom. It's, it's just such a smart idea. Such a good use of the land, such a good use of the space.
Let's push on the spot or you've recovered.
I think you covered it pretty well.
Pretty good.
We, we appreciate all the consideration for the help as it is.
Yeah.
We're a young couple. We have a young family. We're trying to kind of grow from the bottom up and I
The dibs on the maintenance is more, I have to. You get to. Yeah. You get to.
That's right.
I get to. Yeah.
He is probably not as much because he'll do trees.
Seasonal. Yeah. Town manager noted, you know, maintenance, particularly upfront, it's going to be seasonal use. I mean, with the, with the weather changing and stuff like, you know, we did throw around amongst the group, wouldn't it be kind of neat if you had the opportunity to go pick your Christmas tree up, but also play around like just lit up or something like that, kind of a neat little.
Make the green heated.
Opportunity.
So that it just.
Yeah. You never know, you get that, you know, that 60 plus degree day in December nowadays. So.
Forest and orange golf balls.
So if you have any questions, that's, that's.
I, I just have a comment. And then again, knowing the property, I do feel that this is probably as good a use as you could ever find for that property.
Sounds like it would be for it.
Yeah. And it would generate, you know, down the road, some tax income. What we made, the worst maybe, you didn't have to put a sidewalk across the street so they didn't have to cross that ice cream.
Yeah, honestly, I mean, everyone comes to a screeching halt there anyways because of the cars pulling into Georges and the other businesses on, on that side. So I mean, that area of, you know, 85 really needs to slow the traffic down anyways. I mean, people go through there way too fast.
And there's, there's trees too. I, I had a, I hit a tree there one morning early because it's, it's so curvy and there's no slowdown and you can't see.
Yeah, but I, I, I agree with everything you say. Like it's a fantastic, you know, use of the space and, and everything kind of aligns. You know, you have the landscaping, the mini golf, the ice cream, the, the pizza. I mean, you know, it's, it's like a
Two minute.
Yeah, it, it's a dream area to do everything in one night. So, yeah, fantastic.
I really think this represents the kind of outside the box thinking that we need as a town, given our, as you noted, man, limited opportunities outside of the village district for business. So I'm super excited. And I also think it's important to point out that more recreation is a good thing in town and not a bad thing. I mean, when I think about the investments we made in Arpa to Parks and Bracken and all those facilities that just bring people to town and bring people in. So they stay. This is another great example of something that if someone is thinking about going to dinner in Glastonbury, but sees this really cool mini golf course, well, maybe they're going to stop and they're going to pull in and stay in town and eat here instead. So bravo. And I think this is really great work.
Well, Matt, I had a question about, you know, about traffic one across the street, et cetera, et cetera. So are there going to be like coinciding projects to address the traffic lights and things of that nature?
To the extent that we can. So, so we're working with DOT, right?
Yes.
This is a state route and they have their standards. We have, we know we have some opportunities at a minimum to utilize what you see up and down 85, particularly in the south end of Church Street. Oh, rectangular rapid flashing vehicles. So those are those large crosswalk signs that a pedestrian can push the button and get those things lit up and they're pretty, they're pretty flashy. They're definitely reflective. Can we take it to the next level? I would love the opportunity perhaps to maybe even reduce steam with have some actual striping across the road. You know, it's not going to be a situation where we can do any kind of speed bumps or elevated crosswalks. They're not going to allow that state route. But trees, believe it or not, I know they are potentially a hazard, but also have a calming because when you feel a little bit more restricted, you are more inclined to slow down and observe what's around you. It's a conversation that I've already started with the town engineer. We do feel we have a partner that will sort of bat with us in capital region council governments. So it will be a matter of how far we can get with DOT. It's a perfect project for state small town economic assistance program. And now that we're clearing the slate of outstanding state projects, we will essentially get back to our usual habit of finding more success in that program. So I'm hopeful that, you know, this, this might work.
Keep in mind too, that the Connecticut Equine is also going in. So that, you know, that's going to be another like construction piece that right now it's, it's all empty, right? So you're more likely to get that sort of speed. But if you see an, an entering spot, that's, you're going to hit that before you even get to this property. So it, it may help a little bit in that aspect too, like just having the area begun being developed. And they're putting up a pretty, you know, you're going to be able to see their structure. So it's not like it's going to be hidden. So I think that will help.
Yeah, we have, I mean, the, I believe I can speak for Sean Homer. He's actually been working with, communicating very well with the folks who are going to run the Econ Clinic so that there is a cohesive landscape plan. There is actually kind of a rubble, you know, I forget what exactly you call it, but essentially a rubble stone wall from over, you know, agriculturally used, where they're just going to push to the edge that exists. Tree line is a mess. So when that comes down, you'll actually be able to see activity. And then it's replaced with a little bit more with deliberate landscape plan. So, you know, I'm looking forward to see.
And they also have formed relationships with owners of Scruggs and Georges too, so that, you know, they're already they're already pretty ingrained in this whole.
And with the, with respect to Steve Brants and the continuation of potential sidewalks down the road. I think that installation of sidewalks over by Raymond Brook and the, the crossover over, but it has been, I mean, fantastic. I see them moving all the time. Continuing more of that pedestrian friendly type of development.
Yep. Great. Great. Good streets. Pretty, I mean.
Yeah, yeah.
Lots of streets to it. It's not that bad a walk despite, you know, the traffic.
Respect to the strength of the proposal. Your packet is amazing, by the way. And all of our time, like that's forced to vote. I mean, is there a question?
Call the question.
Call the question. Thank you.
Yep.
Okay. Claudia, if you could do the first motion.
If I had a pardon.
She got it.
All right. So the first proposed resolution would be resolved by the Hebron Board of Selectmen and the Hebron Economic Development Incentive Program application received from Proudlight LLC for relief from the assessment on the improvements of 290 Church Street. Be approved for the period of five years commencing the first full fiscal year following the issuance of a certificate of occupancy by the Hebron Building Official in the following amounts. Fiscal year one, 100%, fiscal year two, 100%. Fiscal year three, 80%, fiscal year four, 60%, fiscal year five, 40%.
With that, all those in favor signify by saying aye opposed nay or abstentions. Dan Larson.
Dan Larson, aye.
Sean Fitzgerald.
Sean Fitzgerald, aye.
Tiffany Teal.
Tiffany Teal, aye.
Claudia Riley.
Claudia Riley, aye.
Keith Pettit, aye. That would be unanimous. Thank you very much. And then.
I got a crack to be sort of an error in the second proposal. The first one was fine.
Okay.
Before we read the next one, it says 290, it should be 300.
Okay, yes.
The address.
Yeah, I'm sorry, the address 300.
At 300 Church Street.
Yeah, I just assumed it was the same.
Good catch.
Yes.
Address.
Yeah, they're two different.
You're right. Yep. Thank you. Okay. So be it resolved by the Hebron Board of Selectmen that the Hebron Economic Development Incentive Program application received from Strong Wolf LLC for relief from the assessment on the improvements at 300 Church Street. Be approved for a period of five years commencing the first full fiscal year following the issuance of a certificate of occupancy by the Hebron Building Official in the following amounts. Year one, 100%. Year two, 80%. Year three, 60%. Year four, 40% and year five, 20%. All those in paper signify by saying aye opposed nay or abstentions. Dan Larson.
Dan Larson, aye.
Sean Fitzgerald.
Sean Fitzgerald, aye.
Tiffany Teal.
Tiffany Teal, aye.
Claudia Riley.
Claudia Riley, aye.
And Keith Pettit, aye. That would be unanimous. Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And good luck. We are looking forward to putting.
He's in pass. Family pass.
Looking for some sidewalk to get the ice cream.
Yeah.
Well, that too.
Right.
Just put a bugs.
Oh, like, I'm going to lose so much money to plants, golf and ice cream. I'm going to need some half.
Any adjustments or additions to the draft agenda for August 21st?
We decided to have the workshop with the Commons folks on September 11th, correct?
Correct.
That's the only thing I'm saying.
And Keith, do I tell you now that I will not be at the meeting on August 21st, we will be on vacation.
Okay. Have, have fun. We will miss you.
I will not be dialing in.
I don't blame you. All right. With that, that brings us to nine D, any other new business? Okay. Item 10, the consent agenda. Uh, item ten, the consent agenda. Consent agenda items are considered to be routine in nature. Does anybody want anything pulled out of that? We have approval of minutes. August seventh, twenty twenty five, regular meeting. No tax refunds?
No, we're listening.
Are they, oh, I'm looking, I'm sorry, I'm looking at the draft.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm like, what if you present?
Fuck, I mean, it's a question.
Yeah. I'm like.
Okay.
The future.
He's just signing it, it's like.
Sorry. I I know. That's why I was like, that's why I was like, wait, wait a minute, like, wait a minute. Okay. And that's that's also why the, that's also why the the date was wrong. It's the approval of minutes of July twenty fourth. Yes, twenty twenty five. Tax refunds for Jason, I am going to murder that name, Fred and Susan.
Easy.
Good. Does anyone want anything pulled out?
No.
Okay. Then I make a motion to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor signify by saying I oppose nay or abstentions. Dan Larson.
Yeah, Larson, I.
Sean Fitzgerald. Sean Fitzgerald, I.
Tiffany Teal.
Tiffany Teal, I.
Claudia Riley.
Claudia Riley, I.
And Keith Bennett, I. Thank you very much. Please, on reports, Tiffany.
Nothing from A H M for the Hebrew Board of Education. They recently had their board retreat. They reviewed the district advancement plan and they also conducted the superintendence evaluation.
Uh, Hebrew Board of Ed, you did that one, you did. All right, Board of Finance, Dan Larson.
Uh, nothing to report.
Land acquisition has not met. Rambeau.
Uh, just really quickly, they did meet the other night, actually last night. Uh, they are reviewing, adding additional. EC, E C E, so college level courses for college credit into the RAM curriculum, which they already have, but they're adding some more. Which is great. And then they they also went into executive session. About a couple of issues. Other than that, that's all I have from Rambeau.
Awesome. Yeah, RAM does a fantastic job with the the college level stuff. I I know that this is maybe slightly different than the AP courses, but they have, they have a wide variety of programs for kids to. Get a jump start on their their college education. And let me tell you, that saves families money, saves kids money. It's fantastic. And they have. Really good. Rates of these kids passing the exams at the end of the year, so they're doing a great job. Thank you. With that, we are on our second installment of public comments. There is no. Public present unless.
Nothing online.
Nothing online? Alrighty then, we will move to the favorite part of the agenda.
I'll move to adjourn the Hebrew Board of Selectmen's meeting at seven fifty three.
Awesome, let's go.
I.
No, I want to stay longer.
Have a good night.